Good evening, I call the school committee meeting to order at six o'clock. Will you all stand for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, towards the same, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rogers, if you take role.
Nancy Farrell.
Here.
Kathy Leveras.
Here.
Diana Coyne. Robert Mancini. Mary Raichelt.
Here. So tonight's agenda is just one item, to interview and then select a new business manager. We have one candidate, Adam Tarkini. Did I say that right?
Tarqueenie.
Tarqueenie, damn it. Knew I messed it up. But Adam Tarkini, Tarqueenie's here for an interview. And just so, how we're gonna do this is each of us are gonna ask two questions. We're gonna ask you to come up and just give a brief opening statement, then we'll go through the questions. And then I will have you do a little closing if you have any questions for us. Yeah, all you can all do it right, yeah, and make sure you're talking on the microphone or Brian's gonna come out and yell at you like he did to me last time. Is it? It is not on. So yeah, you can start out with opening statement, just describe kinda your work history, what brings you here to West Springfield, and lay out the roadmap for us.
Sure. First of all, good evening, I appreciate you guys having me. I know our schedules were a little hectic over the next couple of weeks. I appreciate you guys having this meeting tonight and having me here. A little bit about myself, I've been in school finance for, it'll be fifteen years in January. I started off in the Springfield Public Schools, in their accounting business office for a few years. Worked my way up into the grants office, got some experience working with federal grants, and how to use that funding to help educate our students in Springfield. Moved back to the business office for a couple of years to kinda get the whole scope of things. You know, how to run or oversee a budget, meetings, presenting, working with schools, principals, district leadership. I moved down from there, just shy of being there for ten years, I went to Hampden-Wilbraham Regional as the assistant business manager. I was there for just under a year, where I then went to Granby, where I currently am now, as the director of finance and facilities there. Been there for about five years. Again, I oversee the, certainly the budget, but also operations, which in a small town like Granby is facilities, where I have a maintenance and facilities coordinator, an assistant to him, and then six custodians that we oversee. I also oversee our transportation and food service, because we do contract out for both transportation and food service. So, in a small, in a small town like Granby, my role personally oversees, you know, a few different, a few different things.
Awesome. Ms. Farrell?
Welcome, Adam.
Thank you.
Relationships between the school department and the municipal accounting functions are important. How do you see the business office role as it relates to the town accountant's role? What kind of relationships do you have, or have you had, with the town accountant and other town departments? What about with state officials, especially with DESI?
Yeah, so that was, that was one of my biggest challenges coming into Granby, was, and the lack of experience at that time, was kind of fostering that relationship and creating that relationship. And one of the things I had heard in the current role when I got there was that there was, you know, some type of disconnect between the town and the school. So I knew going in there, that was one of my big responsibilities, was kind of developing that relationship. And I think over the four plus years that I've been there, I, along with our personnel, district leadership, have done a great job doing that. We have monthly meetings with our town administrator. We have quarterly reconciliations that I do with my town administrator. My superintendent and I are constantly in contact with our town administrator, because obviously without them, we can't operate. So, the main focus that I, the main thing I wanted to focus on when I got in there is communication. I wanna pick up the phone and talk to someone, I don't wanna communicate through email, I wanna be in person. I wanna develop the relationship where I can go down to his office, or he can come down to my office, drop in, have a conversation. Let's see what's going on, what do you need from me, what do I need from you? And really having that, that relationship where, again, we can just pick up the phone. If I need him for something, I can call him, if he needs me for something, he can call me. And it's, that's a work in progress still, we're still working on that relationship. And it's come a long way over the first four years that I've been there, and we still have some, certainly some work to do. But we have a very good relationship between each other. You're welcome.
Mr. Mancini?
Welcome, Adam.
Thank you.
As a business manager, what do or would you see as your role within the school department?
Um, it's a good question. So my role within the school department really is providing our staff, superintendent, district leadership, town officials, all stakeholders, information that we can go out there and make the best decision to educate our kids. In my role as the director of finance, I'm constantly, you know, reviewing state bylaws, the chapter seventy, our enrollment, taking a look at projections, what does our finances look like over the next year, three years, five years? We're running into what many are calling the fiscal cliff with ESAR and ARPA money running out, and how can we leverage the money that we have to continue to educate our kids in the district? And it's, you know, that comes with a lot of responsibility, it's holding monthly meetings with our principals, district leadership, superintendent, town, as I alluded to. And just making sure there's constant communication, so that they can make informed decisions within the classroom. Again, it comes down to, you know, preparing our kids for post-school, college, and career. So what can we do, what can I do, how can I leverage finances, our operating budget, grants, to provide our kids and our educators with what they need in the classroom, to provide that education to our students? You're welcome.
Ms. Coyne?
Hi, nice to you.
Yes, you too, thank you.
With all the areas covered by a business manager's role, what do you consider your area of greatest strength? Why is that? Perhaps your next greatest, and conversely, what do you feel is your greatest weakness?
So I think you guys asked me this in the first interview. I would say, I would say my greatest strength at this point is being an effective and articulate communicator. I've certainly learned that over the first few years in this position, that I'll be in this position presenting, or in front of school committee, and really putting a focus on the things that I say, make sure they have value to them. So I would say one of the biggest, my biggest strengths is being able to communicate effectively and clearly.
Could you give an example of that?
Sure. I think one of the, the prime examples is during the budget process, and when we're certainly presenting to school committee, or in a public forum, or we implemented this year, attending monthly staff meetings, and really giving the staff, which usually aren't privy to some of the information and some of the decisions that we may, we may be making at the district level, providing them with some details, and giving them that opportunity to ask questions of us, and, and pick our brains on stuff, and us hear them. What are some of their wants, what are some of their needs? So be able to communicate with staff, stakeholders, we have, last year, we held what we called coffee and conversation, where we invited, it was really built for parents of the community, but essentially anybody, town employees, anybody that would come to either one of our schools on campus, and our administration would be there, one of us would be there to have them answer or ask us questions of us, and really have that intimate conversation with them, and kinda let them into what drives our decisions. Because a lot of time when we're presenting the budget, or they're watching a school committee meeting, they're not getting the behind-the-scenes conversation, what went into these decisions. They're just getting, this decision's made, there may be some dialogue on it, but they're not getting the specifics. So we wanted to offer that opportunity for them to, to really see what we were thinking, why did we make some, a decision like that? It may be the wrong decision, it might have been the right decision, we're not gonna please everybody, but, but giving them a little insight onto how we came to that decision.
And then your, your idea of a weakness?
Again, this is a tough one in the first round, I would, I would say in my position right now, it's just me in the finance role. I have a part-time assistant that really, and she's remote, she's part-time, and she helps me really with the warrant. So I would say a weakness, at this point, only for lack of staff around me, would be delegating, and being able to pass some projects off to someone else. I don't necessarily know if it's a weak, weakness, I just haven't had the real experience in a small town like Granby of being able to do that. So I certainly look forward to the opportunity here to have a staff around me, and be able to work collaboratively with them, hear what their ideas are, use their experience, and again, their ideas to help me make decisions as a team.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Leveras?
Welcome, Mr. Tarkini.
Thank you for having me again.
What do you see as the major demands on the school department business office? And how might those demands conflict with each other, and what can a business manager do to try and manage those conflicts?
Could you repeat that again?
What do you see as the major demands on a school department business office? And how might those demands conflict with each other, and what could a business manager do to try and manage those conflicts?
I would say over the last couple of years, personally, one of the biggest demands was trying to keep track of all the different funding sources that came in after COVID. Again, in a very small district like Granby, we're very limited to our operating budget and our entitlement grants, Title I, II, and IV. So when COVID hit, and we were getting ESAR I, ESAR II, ESAR III, that's money that in a small town like Granby, we hadn't seen before, so really leveraging those, those funds, in my position personally, was very difficult. We were looking for creative ways to spend those funds. Also keeping in mind that those funds weren't gonna last, they were, they were gonna run out. So whatever we were doing to use those funds, we would have to be able to sustain that in the next three to five years. So that was, that was a big demand on myself, our, our leadership team in the business office. I would say on a day-to-day basis, or a year-to-year basis, yeah, I would just say the, the ever-changing, ever-changing environment. Special education costs are, are, all costs in general, but certainly special education costs are skyrocketing coming out of the pandemic. So being able to address those and identify those students that need those services, and how we can be creative in using grant funding, our operating budget, some of the ESAR, the ARPA money, is, is certainly a challenge on a, on a yearly basis, and just, again, just, it's growing coming out of the pandemic. So that's certainly a challenge that we're facing, that I'm facing in my current position. And what was the last part, did I miss a part?
What can a business manager do to try and manage these conflicts?
Yeah, it's, I would say networking really, you know, talking to other business managers throughout the state. We have a very, very good opportunity to do that, and a platform to do that on our listserv. I'm part of Masbo, so obviously attending Masbo meetings, and really, again, networking, and see how other districts are handling, again, rising special education costs, reduction in grant funds or ESAR funds, and, and, you know, maybe I can take an idea from someone and, and bring it back to Granby and, and use it. So I would say, I would say networking certainly, and, and communicating. Again, I'm gonna go back to communication for everything, I'm big on communication and having open collaborative dialogue with, with everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So speaking of that fiscal cliff, how would you kinda manage that? We, we know how to spend a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah.
Very creative. But how would you manage that kinda within the central office with the school committee, so that, you know, as that money winds down, the central office, the district isn't coming to the school committee, or the school committee coming to me and saying, you know, well, these positions are important, we need to keep them, it's for the kids, we don't have the money right now, but, you know, well, you should fund it.
Yeah, I feel like that's the easy, it's easy for the school committee to come to town and say, we need more.
I wanna manage those expectations ahead of time.
That's every district, so. Again, I would, I would say, I would say, obviously, what are the school committee's goals, what are, what are, let's identify the school committee's goals, let's identify the districts and the schools, in specific, their wants and needs. And I think I mentioned this in our first interview, a lot of times, wants and needs, I feel like at the school level are interchangeable, you know? But it's really dialing down to, okay, what do we need as a school, what do we need as a district? And then how can we, as long as that is providing our educators with the tools to provide a great education to our students, how can we fund that? Is it something that we apply for a grant? Is it something that we can use our operating budget for? I would say the last resort is to reduce staff. So i- it's really, it's really leveraging the funds, but what I do in my job is we have our strategic priorities, we don't make a decision without labeling what this decision would do to impact one of those strategic priorities. And if it's something that won't impact that strategic priority, to us, that's not a need, that's not something that we should really consider. So we have these four strategic priorities, our decisions better fit within those four strategic priorities. So again, it goes back to the, you know, what are the goals of the district, the town? And again, it's about communication, you know, it's about going out to the schools, knowing what they need in their classrooms. What are they gonna need to provide education to their students, intervention to these students? And then how can we use our funding to help them achieve that?
Works for me.
A lot easier said than done.
Well, and part of it is too, it is, that else, some of the stuff, I, I said a lot, and I'll pontificate a bit on my soapbox. Bill's not here, but I hope he's watching to hear me. You know, a lot of what I've always been saying, when the school committee wants more positions, the district needs more positions, is, you know, it's, show me how it's affecting student achievement and student outcomes. And the good thing of this COVID money has been, you know, we've got to use the money and see that it does in fact work. Now, we have learning loss to make up, but we showed that it did help, adding the interventionist, adding the additional positions. We, we have data that shows it works, so it'd be easier for me to understand, okay, we should keep those positions. But I also would like to know, like, coming up where that cliff is, where we should be able to start, you know, rolling some of that stuff off, rolling tax dollars on, so it's not all of a sudden, you know, in year three, well, we need three million dollars. It's over the past three years, we've added a little bit each year to make up for that, so.
And certainly the ESAR money is, as, as good as it was, it's certainly causing a problem for many of the districts, because it was a lot of money. I mean, let's be honest, it was, it was a lot of money that was allocated to districts. And, and, and my example is, we, we took a step back, and we're like, wow, this is first more money than we've ever seen. And, and too, like, what are, what are we gonna do with it, what can we do with this money that can impact our educators and students directly? And not just use it to offset some of the things that we're currently doing in our operating budget. So how can we use that money? And secondly, how can we sustain this three to five years down the road? We're now three years down the road where we're talking about this, this fiscal cliff, and they're, you know, they're certainly allocating more money through chapter seventy to hopefully help offset this. But it's a, it's a, it's a great question, and again, it all comes back down to doing a needs assessment, knowing what is a need and what is a want. But again, it goes back to what is gonna give us the greatest impact in the classroom for our educators and our students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Farrell?
How would you structure the business office? Who will prepare monthly reports, grant reports, reconciliations with the town, et cetera?
So, and thank you, I did hand out a ninety-day entry plan. Certainly not gonna go through it now, but in here, I kind of, it, it's high level, but I, I think it may answer some of those questions. The first, the first few months, it's gonna be really me sitting back and, and kind of observing what, what people's roles in the business office is currently. And then seeing what some of their strengths may be, they may be doing things that, that tailor to their strengths, they may not be doing things that, that they're not strong in. In general, this aside, and not, you know, learning everyone what they do, I would certainly be the point person for the school and the town. I would say I would be running reports in collaboration with my assistant. Certainly in the first few months, I'm learning a new financial system. It's gonna be tough for me to be able to, to run reports, make sure they're accurate, and deliver them on a timely fashion. So I'm, I will put a lot of that responsibility to that person, work with them collaboratively. Ultimately, it would come out of my office, but I wouldn't be doing the work certainly alone. And again, just learning the positions and making sure, I'm really big on making sure everyone else knows everyone else's position. Because I think, one, it's good growth in your role. We hear that proverbial, get hit by a bus, what do we do tomorrow, and I can't stand that phrase, but it's, it's true. So a lot of cross-training. But again, I, I would be the point person between the school and the town, working with the town administrator like I do in my current role, making sure our finances are aligned, having monthly meetings, providing them reports. I'll be honest, I'm not sure how that works right now, I'm, I'm sure I've, you know, offered the job, and, and I'm in the job, I'll, I'll find that out. But really, yeah, working collaboratively with, collaboratively with my staff, it would come out of my office again, but it'd be a group, a group effort. Thank you.
Mr. Mancini?
How would you describe your management style in working with, A, staff that reports to you, B, other school administrators at the same level as you, and C, administrators and the school committee members to whom you report?
So I'm gonna ask you to repeat some parts of that as I, as I go. I would say in general, my management style is, I'm gonna say hands-off. The, a lot of my management right now is overseeing our facilities, and I have about six to eight people that I oversee, but mainly our maintenance coordinator. It's really, I, I want us to sit down, address what the problem or the concern of the day is, and I want him or her to be able to go out there and figure that out. I want you to be able to bring a solution to me, and problem solve yourself, but bring that to me, and then together we can see, okay, how do we, how do we move forward with addressing a situation? But I really want that person, I'm a big believer in, in letting people grow and fail on their own. I'm gonna help you do both, I'm gonna help you grow, but I'm also gonna help you fail. Because I think most times, in letting people fail, they learn, they learn a lot. So that's how I am, it's more, it's more hands-off. At the end, we're gonna collaborate and come to a decision that is ultimately my decision, but I've had help from, from whoever that person is in making that decision.
Thank you.
I don't think I answered all that, so there was two other parts, I believe, so that was part A, but B was district-level staff?
Part B was yes. Administrator is at the same level as you.
Yeah, so in, in a small town like, like ours, and I, and I keep saying that, a lot of the, we have a cabinet, which consists of myself, our superintendent, our special ed director, and our curriculum director, we meet on a weekly basis. And then we have a district leadership team, which is the people that I just include, principals, assistant principals. And then we have, that's our operational side, then they have an instructional leadership team that I'm not on, but it's, it's essentially all them. So there's not a decision really in Granby that's being made without the input of everybody. Not just including the leadership staff, school committee, stakeholders, parents, teachers, students. So, specific example, during the budget season, I always say, like, I'm really during the budget season, you know, I'm, I'm housing a lot of the information. The, the leadership team, the principals, assistant principals, they're really helping me build the budget, I'm relying on them for what they need and their information. So it's a group effort when we're making decisions at a district level, we're all managing each other, and we're all, we're all working collaboratively and making decisions collaboratively and together. And then the last part was school committee?
Yes.
Similar, we, when I got there, we started to implement subcommittees. One of them was budget and finance subcommittees, and one of my main things was really, I wanted to know from the school committee, what are your goals, what, what are you looking for specifically for me and for finances? What are you looking for, what are some of the things that there are not negotiable each year when we go into the budget process? And then, monthly reporting, what, what are you guys looking for from me? Again, it all comes back to clear communication and making decisions together with students and teachers in mind. Those, all three parts?
That's it.
Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you.
Ms. Coyne?
So, keep that ninety-day plan up. What would your first one hundred days look like, knowing that the start date for this job? I don't know if this, this is correct, the following the new year? Or, it, the date you will come in, what would your first hundred days look like?
So I'm gonna have to revise this to add a ten days, I guess, but, and, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna read this verbatim, but, again, that first thirty days would be really meeting central office staff, and really learning what their roles and responsibilities are, and how they contribute to the team. Meeting with district personnel, principals, assistant principals, superintendent, assistant superintendent, curriculum director, sped director. Really just forming a relationship with them, again, seeing what their needs are. What are the, some of the things that, that we've done in the past that worked, what are some of the things that haven't worked? What are some of the things that you would like to see different moving forward, what are some of the things you'd like to see remain the same moving forward? So really, the first thirty days was, would be start establishing relationship, building principals, building staff, district leadership, the town. Thirty days seems like a lot, but, but when you're trying to form all those relationships, it's, it's not a, it's not a very long time. Within the first sixty days, after kinda developing those relationships, really getting into, okay, what does everybody do, what is everyone's role? What, what do they contribute to specifically my team? What are processes and procedures that are in place? What are processes and procedures that are lacking and we may need to put in place? I had said earlier, really getting to know their strengths and weaknesses, making sure there's cross collaboration, cross-training within at least my staff in the business office, so everyone knows each other's roles. And so, I call it financial literacy training, it's really Finance 101. And that's kind of educating the district, all stakeholders, community, parents, on what school finance really is, what, 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 how our revenue's generated, and how we can use that to, to educate our students. And in the first ninety days, it's really putting all of that together, and, and working with the superintendent, the school committee, to set goals that then I can base my work on. What are some of the goals of the school committee, what are some of the goals of superintendent? Building out goals for myself, and then, and then tailoring my work to those goals, and hopefully achieving those goals for the district.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Leveras?
Can you tell us your experience at presenting budget information at public meetings, including school committee meetings and town council meetings that are televised? And how do you prefer to do it?
Yeah, so, the, and this was a similar question in the first round. So the first, actually this past budget presentation was the first one, I hadn't done it by myself. For the first four years, it was me presenting to school committee, with some input from the superintendent and our, and our leadership team. It was me at town meetings, presenting to them. It was a group effort at public forums, we would have, aside from the public hearing, we'd have public forums where we would invite the community in to, again, get an inside look as to decisions we were being made and how they were being made. So I've, I have experience, a great experience doing that. We, we changed it up a little bit this year, and our superintendent was the one who presented the budget, again, in collaboration with myself and school leadership. But we also had school leadership play a role, the principals play a role, because really, they were the ones that made decisions. And, and a lot of decisions, and a lot of the things in the budget were impacting our schools, and we wanted them to be able to articulate what was in the budget, what were they asking for, why was this necessary? Why was there something in the budget this year that we hadn't had in the past? And why is there something not in the budget this year that we may have had in the past? It was really, I can sit up there and talk about it, I can't answer the, really, the instructional aspects of it. They can do a better job articulating that, so we, we changed the way we did it this year, but I certainly have lots of experience presenting in front of school committee, town council, finance committee, at our town meeting, answering questions on town meeting floor, so I certainly have experience doing that. Was the second part, what do I prefer?
Yeah.
I don't prefer doing it at all, to be honest with you, but I, I have to, and, and it gets easier. I'll be honest, the first year when I came in, that first budget process was tough, this is my first time in this role doing a budget on my own, and now I gotta present to, to people that I've only been with. doing a budget on my own, and now I gotta present to, to people that I've only been with for about six months, town, um, officials that, um, I don't know really. So that, that was, that was difficult. That was one of the most difficult times, um, of my current position, but it's gotten easier. And I think because the communication has gotten better, our relationships have grown to be better. So, um, it's more of a conversation and a dialogue than it is a presentation, um, over the last few years and, and again, we still have some work to do, but it, it's certainly gotten easier. But I would prefer that I don't have to do it, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Adam. And just in closing, uh, I'll ask if you will have any questions for us, but just the next steps, what we're gonna do tonight, we'll discuss it. Um, and then make a decision how we're gonna move forward from there.
I do have a couple of questions, um, and I asked these at the first round, I'm gonna ask them again. I, I think they're, they're pretty well thought out. There's one I didn't get to ask at the first one, and I think it's the most important one, because I like to ask it when we're interviewing candidates. Um, my first one is, is what are you, what is this group looking for, um, in a candidate? And one can answer, everyone can answer, um, but, but what are you guys looking for in a candidate?
I think, I see Nancy going for her microphone, so I'm sure she's gonna have something else to say. Um, but speaking on behalf of myself, the chair of the school committee and the mayor of the town, I'm looking for someone that will get along with both ends. Um, we've had some great individuals that work here. I think what really drives it and makes the connection good is that the business manager is able to get along well with the CFO and, and deal with a lot of the, I'm not a numbers guy, I don't know, Vito's a number, and now Nancy is, but I, I'll leave, I'll leave the numbers to the folks that, that have backgrounds in it, and, and getting a lot of those issues worked out kind of behind the scenes and getting it resolved, so it's not something that comes up and, and becomes a point of friction, I think is really important. And making sure that, uh, this, the business manager and the CFO can kind of handle those things kind of outside and, and just make sure it runs smoothly and runs well is, to me, one of the most important things.
Yeah, I'm fully aware of the, the person that's been in this position for the last plenty of years here, and, and that'll be one thing is, you know, not necessarily filling their shoes, but, but maybe enhancing the, the things that they have done, the relationships that they have done. But, but I certainly agree, like, I am the middle man, so I, I need to be the, I need to be that point person for both sides.
And it's good to hear you say you like to pick up the phone and see someone in person, because I think a lot of this, like, through COVID, we have so much reliance on, on email and texting. I know it's convenient, but, you know, talking to someone face-to-face is not the same as, you don't read all the emotions that are in the email.
Exactly. You can't convey tone and emotion through email. I've learned that, um, in my five years, almost five years in this position, I've learned that the hard way in my first couple of years, that, um, email might not be the best way to communicate at some times. So let's just pick up the phone. I mean, we, we have them, let's pick up the phone, let's, let's talk it out. I can hear maybe you're angry at me, or you can hear maybe I'm angry at you. Let's try to work it out. But yeah, I, again, I'm gonna go back to this, communication to me is the, is the biggest part of this job. The numbers, I don't care how much the numbers are, the numbers are easy, really, to me. It, it's the, it's a relationship building. It, it's the respecting people, um, and listening to people and hearing people is, is really big for me.
And at least in my experience in, in other communities, we're rare in that for, we started out having the school department in this building physically, which I don't know of any other community that has that close, physical relationship, and now it's just across the street. So it's physically close, so there, there is that easy ability to just walk across the street and ask a question versus, you know, having to drive across the district or across the town, so.
Certainly.
Ms. Farrell?
Oh, I really love it when the business manager can explain the budget to me, so I have a complete understanding of it. So I'm on the chair of the budget subcommittee and we meet often. And, uh, seeing, being able to understand it, knowing like where the numbers are. And I like the communication of it, like, knowing like why we're spending the money on particular things. So your ideas resonated with me tonight.
Yeah, one of our biggest things, and my biggest thing is, is we're asking every year townspeople to go and vote and approve a school budget. For the most part, they didn't really know what was in it, or again, how we got to those numbers. So we've made a real focused effort on dumbing that down for people. So when you're going to vote at town meeting, you know what you're voting for. You're not just voting for, because I got a grandchild, grandchild there, or I have a child there. You may be voting for that, but you're also voting because you agree or disagree with some of the things that we're, we're presenting. But it's our job to make sure that the community knows what's in there.
Anyone else? Any other questions?
I do, I got a couple more, but, um.
I'm only gonna give you six more minutes so we can deliberate.
This is the most important one, though. And I, I, we like to ask this, um, when we're interviewing candidates, why West Springfield?
Why not West Springfield? You know, as a, as a townie myself, I've gone to the schools here, if most folks know which my favorite school is. Um, but I've spent my whole life here, uh, and for me, to be the mayor and to have this job and be able to give back to the community that I grew up in is, is a dream come true. Um, and kind of what we see and, and what we put into our district, I mean, you can see with the, the new elementary school that's going up across the street. We have built a new high school, uh, probably close to ten years ago now. Um, but we're just approving a new feasibility study to look at all the elementary schools, to bring them up, ideally within the next ten years, up to a point where all elementary schools are at least as close to state of the art as they can be. We may not rebuild all of them, since some are only fifty years old. Uh, but I know on behalf of the school committee and to the council as well, willing to invest in the education of our community. And at the same time, West Springfield is very unique in that we're the crossroads of New England. We have ninety-nine-one cuts right through West Springfield. And we have the largest fair in New England in West Springfield. Uh, but we also have a very diverse population that attends our schools with over, I don't know what the number is anymore, but over fifty, seventy-two. I always keep it safe, with fifty different languages spoken in our schools, languages and dialects. So it's a very unique place, um, here. We're surrounded by five other cities. Uh, communities are all very physically close together, but also demographically similar. So it's a great experience, I think, in, to work in what is like a, a, a town, a city that thinks it's still a town. Um, but I think at least for us, it's a very unique place in the Pioneer Valley. Can anyone top that?
I was gonna echo.
You gonna try?
No, no. But I was gonna echo that as well about the uniqueness of this city that thinks it is a town. And it's something, I'm a tad older than Will, but also a townie as well and went through the schools, so, and my kids just finished going through the schools, so I've kind of seen it from that older lens, I guess. And the newer lens, and just as, for me personally, seeing, you know, that investment in money. I've seen the difference in the education versus when I went, versus, versus what my kids got as an education. And just the value, I think, that the students are getting, um, being really in very much a global community is, is, is much more than they probably realize at this point in their lives. And to be able to have, you know, the budget to support the me- the very many needs that we do have. There are a lot of students with needs in this town. And, um, you know, I think it's really important to be able to find those sources to support everyone and where they are in their journey.
When I was doing my research a few weeks ago, I'm like, is it a city? Is it a town? What do I put down for my notes? I don't wanna refer to it as the wrong thing. Yeah, it was, yeah, so, thank you for that.
You got time for one more if you have one?
Um, that was my last one.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. I was gonna, oh, I was gonna ask me, what else wants to make a campaign speech? Diana and I both did, so.
I, I, I have, I think I do have a pretty good one. Eh, what are the biggest challenges that this position faces?
Uh, you know, for one, I would say the u- u- upcoming fiscal cliff. There's, and, and balancing out what we've invested over the past three years with all this ESR money, the COVID, everything that you've talked about. Um, and balancing out, you know, what we've accomplished with that money and how we, we don't wanna walk away and have all those positions be gone, because as I mentioned earlier, some of them, I, even I do think are needed, and I'm the biggest budget hawk here. Um, but I think balancing out those needs, you know, working with, there's been a lot of turnover in the, the central office over the past few years, just the, I think nature of COVID and what it's doing to, to folks that have to work in this position. I mean, I mean, these are the hardest positions over the past two years to work in, in the school department. Um, so managing that and then, and building on that relationship with the town to make sure that, you know, everyone's working closely together and we're all moving in the same direction. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. I appreciate, again, I appreciate maneuvering the schedule around to, uh, to accommodate this.
Oh, my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good from up here?
Yeah, you're good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have five, maybe, maybe ten minutes. The next item on our agenda is a discussion and potential vote. Yes, yeah, yeah, please. Ms. Farrell?
Motion to appoint Adam Tarquini as the business manager for West Springfield Public Schools contingent upon a successful contract negotiation with the school committee.
Any discussion? Ms. Farrell?
I thought Adam did a great job tonight in the interview. I think he comes to us with the experience that we need. Coming from a smaller district, I think he's ready to move on to a larger district of West Springfield. He has an understanding of the things that I was looking for, the ESR grants and some of the grants that we've seen. Being able to have the experience of publicly presenting a budget and working with the school community and the community at large.
Yeah, and just to echo on that, I think it's good to work in that smaller community, to have a bunch of different experience doing different things, not just budget, but also coming from Springfield and having ten years in a, in a larger district with different offices, but we don't have a grants office, so. Um, but getting a different experience, I think, is important. Anyone else?
I, I think I would just add that the comments, um, that you made again, just around, uh, fiscal liter- literacy and educating the community a bit more of, you know, like pulling back the curtain a bit more on what the budget is. Because I think a lot of people do think it's a big black box and, you know, it's, it's complicated, but I think, um, you know, showing the value of what dollars are being invested, what are, you know, all the different sources. I think it just will help the community, and I think also as part of that, just ultimately um, showing people what the value and the outcomes of that investment are. I think it's really k- critical going forward. But thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Ms. Rogers, you take a roll vote?
Mayor Raichow?
Yes.
Robert M- Mancini?
Yes.
Kathy Leveres?
Yes.
Diana Coyne?
Yes.
Nancy Farrell?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Congratulations. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, without objection, we adjourn. Thank you.